McCall, Robinson, and Anastasia.
I'll make.
None, reps.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Anastasia. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Committee reports and unfinished council business?
None.
Communications from the mayor?
We have a special fractionation recognition of Arbor Day.
Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, and produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees planted in Oleane increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and wood fire community. Whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas Oleane has been recognized as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Therefore, I, William J. Haleo, Mayor of the City of Oleane, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two Arbor Day in the City of Oleane. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts, and promote the well-being of present and future generations. For the City of Oleane, New York, William J. Haleo, carry.
And I have our new flag here, which we will be displaying on the flagpole starting with tomorrow. Continue to be a tree city.
Awesome.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Hey Frank, how many trees did that guy plant? Was it a million?
Uh, produced a billion in the following year.
Mayor, what do you think?
A million trees?
A million trees planted in Oleane, New York. What do you think? That'd get us some headlines.
Just don't plant oak trees.
Could put them over, uh, Ray and Nate Smith's work. Sure he would appreciate that.
Okay, thanks.
Keep them out of the subway as to do with our sewer lines.
Alright. Very good.
And just one more, I think I sent everybody today, but we, uh, we do have the new forester started on Monday. His name is Michael Rhodes, and so, uh, I sent you his email today. He'll be active on Monday. And, uh, we'll get him to a meeting to introduce himself.
Yeah, that would be great. Okay, um, anything else? Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm sorry.
Communication, uh, miscellaneous communications?
None.
City official reports? City official reports? None?
None.
Okay. Um, how about proposed legislation and referrals?
PL number forty-one dash twenty-two by Mayor Haleo, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two for resolution by Council President. PL forty-two dash twenty-two by Mayor Haleo, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two for resolution by Council President. PL number forty-three dash twenty-two by Mayor Haleo, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two for resolution by Council President. PL forty-four dash twenty-two by Mayor Haleo, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two by Council President. PL number forty-five dash twenty-two by Alderman Witt, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two by Council President. PL number forty-six dash twenty-two by Alderman Anastasia, referred to Strategic Planning Committee by Council President. PL number forty-seven dash twenty-two by Mayor Haleo, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two by Council President.
Okay, uh, before I open it up for public comment, I'd like to give an opportunity for any of the Aldermen to make a statement at this time. Alderman Robinson?
Yep, this one, uh, I wanted to talk to the council about something that happened today. Uh, yesterday, I sent an email to codes, the council, police chief, uh, the mayor about a complaint, uh, about a complainant. Uh, complaint was, uh, for a couple of things along, uh, a street in my ward. And to my surprise, the person that everyone had complained about had contacted me. And my question to my, to, I started asking myself was, one, how did this person end up calling me? Where was the autonomy in this complaint? So, I, I felt that that, to me, it was unethical. It shouldn't have happened. And I, I didn't, I didn't have any issues with the person calling me because I can very well take care of myself and, and talk to this person. But I thought it was just unethical that it happened in the first place. Uh, I did talk to the chief about the situation. He gave me a, 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 a good explanation. But like I said, to me, it, it should not have happened. And it, it raised questions and concerns in my head of, uh, you know, what was the purpose in my name being mentioned, uh, to someone that we are sending a complaint about? Um, you know, if, if we had an issue and we're presenting it on behalf of our constituents, uh, I don't think anyone's name should be mentioned. The purpose is for, for the city employee, whether it be codes or police officer, to go and talk to that person and rectify the situation. To me, that's the only thing that should be done. Um, and, and this kind of goes back for me, it goes back to, uh, Police Reform Committee. When we were told that the officers are discreet and they're professionals. And, and I get it. We, we defend and we, we want to uphold them to the highest standard. But this is a perfect example of why we need, uh, police reform. Because it's, it's hard for people or citizens in the city to go and talk to someone and not feel like their name's going to get dropped or there's going to be some type of, uh, retribution because they said something about another neighbor or because they said something about, uh, a police officer or a city employee and so forth. And this is, this is a perfect example of how, uh, a slip can turn into something major. And I don't expect the police officer to come back and say, you should have did this and that, or, or I'm going to be vice versa. I think it was, it was, uh, something where name was dropped because of how the situation happened. I'll accept, you know, what, what the chief said is the reason why it happened, but it should not have happened that way. Uh, so I think that for, for the situations, uh, with the city and to the Aldermen who put themselves out there and do this position for chump change, uh, it, it's not worth it to go out there and get into an argument with someone or, uh, feel like that you're going to be cornered by someone because you are basically doing your duty by going and talking to, uh, your constituents and, and representing them against others. Um, again, I felt it was unethical. Uh, I think that needs to change. We need to do better with the city. And, uh, I, I think, another thing I want to iterate, I, I think sometimes everyone forgets that I don't consider myself a politician. I'm just a person that came on this council and decided to do something for the city. And, and basically just hold it down until if, if someone beats me, so be it. It, I have a job. I have a full-time job. It's no big deal with me. So, I'm just here to help out where I can and, and do the best I can for the sake of the people here in Oleane. That's it. I don't have any political gain, any monetary gain from this at all. So, I just want that to be known the next time my name is dropped and then I actually respond to the person accordingly. So, that's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Robinson. Anyone else? Any other comments? Aldermen McCall?
So, I had a couple of people, um, and it was in, uh, the Oleane publication, the Tap, Tap Oleane, right? Tap into Oleane. And then a couple of people had contacted me just about the, um, Oleane Equity and Inclusion Committee. And it kind of goes back to what I said last week. And when I was coming on, clearly I had, had missed, um, an email that had stated that, you know, that the committee had been placed on hiatus. And so I've had probably three or four people, well, maybe even five, kind of either send me a message on Facebook or, or ask me about this because it came into Tap into Oleane. And so I guess from my perspective, when we talked last week, we were talking about how some people may not see the need for, um, the police reform or even the Oleane Equity and Inclusion Committee because they may not be directly affected by any of the issues or perceive they're not directly affected by any of the issues that they're addressing. And so I read both letters. I mean, I read what, what was posted on Tap into Oleane when somebody had sent me a message and said, hey, what do you think about this? Actually, I didn't even know you could send verbal messages by Facebook, but I got a few. And, and so I guess that's where my concern is. And I did read both letters. I would like to see us revisit this, um, because I do think that we do have ongoing issues related to both race, LGBT, um, and some religious issues that, that do need our, they need to be in the forefront so that we can put together practices that are proactive for one. And secondly, just so that we can be a better community for people who, you know, if we talk about wanting people to move here and businesses wanting to move here, we have to demonstrate that we are inclusive.
Thank you, Alderman McCall. Anyone else? Yes, Alderman Anastasia.
The only thing I'd like to say is, uh, when we have our Strategic Planning Committee next week, I'd like to invite, uh, this gentleman, his name is Ray Warnes. He's interested in buying some crofty off of, uh, Coleman Street in Van Campen Avenue. And he would like to explain the reasons why to the common council. So, I, I'm assuming the meeting's going to be next Tuesday.
Yes.
And the only other thing I've been getting, and I've been talking to the mayor and I talked to Linda Hoff, is I've been getting tons of pot over the legs. And I believe we're waiting for May first, when the blacktop plan opens, so we can go on properly. That's what I've been telling the people. So, I hope, uh, May first, we start going out and filling some of those holes.
Is that the day, is that the date, though?
Uh, I'm not sure of May first. As soon as the blacktop plan opens up, yes, we have crews that'll be out there. We did get some additional money, uh, from the state. We were fortunate to get under the new pothole, I guess you'd say pot of money. They're calling it pop. The O P's, uh, money. And, uh, we got an additional ninety-seven thousand.
Okay.
So, that, that, uh, we are, uh, we're gearing up and as soon as the blacktop plan opens. As everyone knows, we put coal patch in the country. So, as soon as we can patch these, it'll be, uh, uh, I'm not sure if the, uh, if it's May first or it's in that area there. So, we're getting ready. I talked to Ivan yesterday and, and he has a plan. And, uh, as soon as it opens, we'll be, we'll be putting blacktop in the holes and filling them in, so.
You know, with that being said, and, um, I don't want to inter, uh, I guess step on your ward too much, but, um, would, would it be possible to, I don't want to step on your turf, you know, but, uh, would it be possible to put the underpass, I mean, we did Buffalo Street, we dealt with the money last year and it, and it turned out excellent, right? It made such a huge difference. But is there a plan for like right underneath that underpass? Because I don't think that ever got addressed in the millipede.
We came just short of it, would be our portion of it there. So, I can check on it tomorrow. I'm sure they do have a plan to get that done.
Yeah, yeah, um, so.
That's just, that was another one that, I think we talked about it at one time and said, you've been lucky.
Yeah.
And then boom, all of a sudden, yeah.
Cause we've patched that up, I mean, again and again and again. I, I think, again, just as one of the major entryways, uh, into the city. Um, and then, you know, something else, someone had brought up to me, Mayor, throwing you on the spot here with all these different issues. Yeah, I feel like Bob said that the state was being contacted, that we were working with the state, that the, what do you call it, the joint over here is being, is that something, uh, the state has to come in and fix that, right? And they're aware of the, the terrible bump there?
I had a conversation with the, uh, with the local office down in Salamanca, uh, and that the person down there, can't, um, draw a blank on the name right now, but, uh, they were going to reach out to their supervisor. They are aware of it. And, uh, there is something in the plans that they're taking care of.
So, I thought so. Okay, on North Union Street, is that right?
The grid, yeah, but the common noise, the, uh, North Union Street extension, so.
Thank you for that.
That, that is the state's responsibility.
Yes, okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Um, and then I just want to, uh, I, I think it's a, a good, I think it's a great thing. I want to congratulate Officer Matt Schnell and his wife on the birth of their triplets. Um, so, two, two boys and a girl. So, I'm sure plenty of sleep at Officer Schnell's house. Uh, so, anything else from, uh, Alderman?
John, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to direct it to the mayor too. Um, with Bob, with Bob being gone, um, can we look forward to the same, uh, resurfacing plan that we were kind of left off with last year? I mean, is that going to take place this year as scheduled?
Yes.
Okay. Did we end up getting extra money in, uh, the governor's budget or not?
No, we did not get, uh, names money. We did get, actually, we got, um, about four hundred and fifty dollars less in chips. We got, uh, the same in the winter recovery. We got the same in paved New York, and we got the increase in the pothole money.
Okay.
So, but we also got the Tory money again. We got another nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars in Tory money. So, our, uh, with the holdover from last year, the chips money, uh, it looks like we're going to have about one point, uh, one point seven or one point eight, uh, million dollars to do repair work in the city. So, we're, yeah, the, uh, Engineering Department, Dave Crandall, is, uh, we're working, uh, on that now to, uh, the additional, uh, areas and that that we're going to do.
Okay. And speaking of engineering, any updates on the search for D W garage?
No, we have no, no nither. We're going to expand our search. So, um, uh, I may be coming to you, uh, for, uh, for some additional funds. We're, we're pretty much exhausted the funds we had for searches, so, uh, we want to expand, uh.
Is there, um, an off, off-topic or we could take it offline, uh, headhunting agencies? Things that, that help recruit for municipalities?
What we found is there's, uh, some organizations like the, uh, New York State Public Works Association, the National Public Works Association, things like that, that, uh, that charge for advertisements. So, that's where we're, that's where we're going.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor, for the update. Alright, anything else? Okay, um, I will ask the clerk to please read your public comment statement at this time.
Public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
Alright, at this time, I will open public comment. I invite you to approach the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. Extra credit for your assignments. If you approach the podium and state your name and address, you will have five minutes. Anyone? Anyone at all? I've got contacts with your teacher. No? Alright, anyone? Alright, at this time, I will call public comment closed. On to finance and bills.
The auditor has processed bills and claims against the City of Oleane as per list submitted to each Alderman and recommends payment thereof. Whereas the auditor has presented to the common council bills and claims against the City of Oleane totaling eight hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twelve cents for the budget and recommends payment thereof. Now, therefore, they resolve that the same be and are hereby audited and allowed. And the auditor is hereby authorized and directed to draw warrants for the payment thereof at the amount set opposite each respective claim.
Okay, we all received finance and bills, discussed in committee. I'll make a motion. Uh, first of all, any, any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll make a motion. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded, uh, by Alderman McCall. All in favor? Aye. Okay, so I guess we need to, uh, officially take rolls. So, I call it this. Will the clerk please call the roll then? So, we've got me and McCall. Alright, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes. On to resolutions.
Resolution number forty-one dash twenty-two, PL number forty-one dash twenty-two.
Okay. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from general fund contingency to the capital funds. Uh, we talked about moving these three, uh, items out of the budget. Uh, they're small capital, one-time purchases, uh, and pulling out of general fund contingency. Any comments or questions on this? Uh, I'll entertain a sponsor. Okay, motion's made by Alderman Witt. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Gonzalez. Alright, any comments or questions? Seeing none? Nope, see ya. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Faces unanimously. Resolution forty-three dash twenty-two, PL number forty-three dash twenty-two to amend the tax rate in the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget to fifteen dollars and fifty-four cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation.
Okay, so, just so we don't forget, we're going to need to go back to resolution forty-two dash twenty-two. Uh, for the fire station repairs. Yep, that's, alright, we'll go back to it. So, um, alright, so we talked about this one, uh, in committee. Uh, and I believe, Len's is giving me a thumbs up because I, I feel like these words came out of my mouth last year. But this is going to be corrected. We've got a corrective action in place, right? We are good to go. Mr. Auditor? Alright, alright, very good. So, we've got just a small correction in the, uh, tax rate um, in the new budget to fifteen dollars and fifty-four cents per thousand of assessed valuation. Um, and that had to do with the S D R exemptions and V A, veteran?
Mentoring stuff, some, well, some half, I don't know.
So. Okay, so, we got that update last week. Any comments or questions? Alderman Gonzalez?
Is this the amendment that gives mayor fifty thousand dollars or your raise?
Oh, my goodness, don't stare.
That, that, that's just putting out there, that's what I'm hearing. That's in the, that is in the fine print there. Geez, Mayor, you're slick.
That was a lot to better track there.
Thought you could give him a pass this bill, but he was gone.
Okay, um, do you have to put in parentheses that he was joking for the record? Do you put that in the record?
For the record, that was sarcasm.
You should really watch that piece.
Uh, any comments or questions? Other comments or questions? Alright, um, seeing none, I'll go ahead and sponsor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Panis. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman, Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
President Crawford?
Yes.
Faces unanimously. Sorry for being out of order. Resolution number forty-two dash twenty-two, PL number forty-two dash twenty-two. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from general fund balance to newly created capital fund number two-two-zero.
Okay, Frank, keeping me on my toes here. Uh, okay, this too is discussed in committee. We've, uh, approved one of the, uh, I guess we kind of asked the fire chief to identify which was the most critical of the repairs. So, we're taking sixty thousand out of the fund balance to make, uh, all of those, uh, cement repairs, uh, to, I think, both fire stations.
Yes.
So, any comments or questions? Seeing none, uh, I'll entertain a sponsor on this one.
Have sponsored.
Alright, sponsor is made by Alderman McCall.
I'll second.
And seconded by Alderman Anastasia. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Faces unanimously. Resolution number forty-four dash twenty-two, PL number forty-four dash twenty-two to award contract for the Cataract, Cataract County Oleane Airport taxiway A and B rehabilitation project to Union Concrete and Construction Corporation West Central New York in the amount of eight hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, um, just discussed this in committee of the whole. Any final questions? Seeing none, will the clerk, uh, we need some, oh, we got our sponsors from the committee of the whole. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
President Crawford?
Yes.
Faces unanimously. Resolution forty-five dash twenty-two, PL number forty-five dash twenty-two by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Anastasia to accept mowing work by the Oleane Urban Renewal Agency at eighteen-hundred Constitution Avenue in the amount, in an amount not to exceed a thousand dollars for the two thousand twenty-two mowing season.
Any questions on this one? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Faces unanimously. Resolution number forty-six dash twenty-two, PL number forty-seven dash twenty-two by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman Gonzalez. Resolution to approve boost business grant marketing assistance program applications for financial assistance.
Okay, discussed this one in committee of the whole. Any final questions on this? Seeing no questions? Do you have a question? No questions?
No, I got it, I just.
Okay. Seeing no questions, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
President Crawford?
I abstained.
You abstained?
Uh, stating conflict of interest, uh, for business consultant, business advisor.
Six ayes, one extension, extension. Resolution passes.
All right, anything before we adjourn?
Yeah, except for one quick question. I thought I saw, I believe, now, not too long ago, from, from yourself or the mayor or somebody, that we forgot to put money in here for the dog equipment for the park. I thought there'd be a resolution today that transferred funds, you know, this one.
Okay.
That something that needs to be done so we don't lose, you know, construction here.
So, the, I mean, I'll give you my update, if Bill wants to give a further update. So, the money that we voted on, what was it, two weeks ago, was the installation of, and the overall project at Oakdale Park. It, when D P W put together the bid specs, they pulled out about twenty-five thousand dollars worth of the dog park equipment itself, thinking that the city could just purchase them through sole source means. We met with N I C O M on it, and that sole source letter doesn't suffice. So, the mayor, myself, Kerry, met with, and Jack, met with N I C O M to get some guidance on that. And so we either have to look for a national preferred procurement provider or we have to go out to bid to purchase the twenty-five thousand dollars worth of, worth of dog park equipment. So, we can set the money aside. The, the project is moving forward, right, Bill? We just have to, we just have to figure out a way to purchase the, the actual equipment. Do you have anything else that you would add to that, Bill?
No, you said it very well. Like John said, we have a N I C O M on this, and Rebecca Rizzuto is the attorney, who's very well versed in, in procurements. And so, we're, we're, most likely, we're probably gonna have to go back out to bid, which we'll try to do very quickly.
So, I'll be following up with the mayor probably this week and figure out, get together a plan. I did, I did do a little research, Bill, and there are those similar N P P type programs out there that they sell playground equipment and dog park equipment, so that could be another opportunity for us to pursue too. So, I'll follow up with the mayor on that. Okay? Anything else? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second, please?
Don't second.
Seconded by Alderman Gonzalez. All in favor? Aye, opposed? All in favor.